There's nobody online. I'm on the recording.
What a beautiful day.
It is.
It ought to be better if we were doing a story time at the last meeting. Then it would be the best of all.
That would put me in a sweat. Well, it is two o'clock.
One of my story times, that would not be the case. Okay. So it is two o'clock and let's do the procedural things.
All right, let's call this meeting in order. We'll start with roll call.
All right. Counselor McBride.
Here.
Counselor Weezy.
Here.
Counselor, uh, Counselor Keller?
Here.
Mayor Rutter?
Here.
Counselor Olson?
Kristen.
Counselor Carmen?
Here.
Kristen.
Uh, big Counselor Young, Counselor Hallman, who's not yet present. Melissa Bailey?
Here.
Mary Nelson?
Here.
Randy Ricker? Amy Day? Uh, Lieutenant Phil, who's a little bit late? Leslie Murray?
Here.
And Megan Dorris.
All right. So the reason we called this meeting is because we have had some people making requests what to do with the money that is in the construction excise tax fund. And we felt that it would be best to get the two groups together that are in control of that and decide what types of projects that we're interested in funding. And so that being said, you all got the same email and I'm sure that you all will give your suggestions. So Will, take it away.
Okay, so I'm gonna close the door a little. Counselor Yarmell Hallman just said she's on her way and is running just five minutes late. There we go. Okay, so construction excise tax, fund strategy for affordable housing incentives. And first of all, first few slides, we just thought we would go over some things that you all already know. So the legal underpinnings of the program was set up by ordinance 2020-2016. It started November 16, 2020. The authorizing legislation was Senate Bill 1533, 2016. And don't you just wish the Senate would change the numbering system so that it would not repeat years all the time? I do hate that about that. Okay, regulated by ORS 197.349 and ORS 320.170. And the collection of construction excise tax began in January 2022 and ended on July 2023. And 100% of the net revenue for CET will be allocated to affordable housing programs of one sort or another. In December 5th of 2022, civic council NOFA authorization was considered but delayed per council direction following a briefing on the CET program. Notice of Funding Availability, NOFA, is scheduled to be launched in January, we would hope.
2024?
2024.
I should say 2024. And I did not make.
Okay. It's one, it's one, I believe that.
Well, if I could only do that, put all my money on Red Rum, because it won the Derby every single time. Okay, so let's look at how CET sort of breaks down. First of all, there's an allowed amount of 4% for administrative costs. Then there is 50% allowed to fund developer incentives. The balance right now is approximately $525,000. This can be used for system development, land acquisition, and local public improvements required by municipal governments. 15% of the total goes to the state of Oregon for the Oregon Housing and Community Services Department, and therefore, of course, is not available for a local award.
Actually, Will, that's the down payment assistance program?
Yes.
So anyone from Newburgh could apply to that. It's just a statewide one.
Yep.
Just so you know.
Yep, that's true.
So it's a 525, is that less the 15%?
So these are the residual amounts which are in our accounts.
So we still have to pay?
No, this is after that.
Okay, so we've already done that. Okay, the amounts we're giving is what we have.
So the 525 is 50%.
Correct. This is our actual liquidity. Okay. And then 35%, of which there is currently $367,000 available liquid in our accounts, can be used for system development and land acquisition and local public improvements required by municipal government, affordable housing programs in accordance with ORS 320.195 to include rent buydowns and subsidies, down payment assistance, and foreclosure prevention assistance.
Randy Ricker just joined us on my left.
Okay, so before we go to the next slide, about those generalities which we have all heard many times before, are there any questions for either our fabulous attorney or our fabulous planners about those things? Yes, sir?
At our last meeting, the number that we had that we were working with was 1.5 million. Was that the total before they did outdrifts? Or what's the discrepancy?
I believe that was the aggregate total before any deductions or anything else. So these balances are what we have to work with.
Okay.
Okay, smashing.
All right, we'll get it.
Ooh, thank you. And deed restrictions that require property remain affordable housing as defined by this chapter for a period of not less than six years from the date of the restriction. I will attempt to explain that, and I will probably fail, and when I do, people can jump in and save me. This means, I believe, that if property is conveyed under these programs, that if it's affordable housing, these sort of restrictions would be added to the deed. Please elicit further experts if desired.
Right, so if you do rent buydown, it doesn't turn that apartment building into an affordable housing that has to be for 60 years? It's only if you buy property to build affordable housing that you're declaring that? Is that what you're?
That is my understanding.
Does that match with?
If real property is conveyed.
Yeah, you think, what's the purpose of this? You don't want somebody turning around and saying, like, "Oh."
But the one that comes to mind, the reason that I was asking, is Habitat, for example. Helps people get into housing, has public improvements that have to be done, like sidewalks or whatever, but it is not affordable housing, and it belongs to the person. It's actually part of creating wealth for people so that they grow. So it sounds like if this money has to be used for affordable housing, then it can't be used for a house unless you put that in the.
That's my understanding.
Well, and just to clarify, Habitat has built some homes that, where the property has this restriction. In fact, the last two that were, you know, common wall house that was built had that restriction. Part of it is because money available, is it the lift grant or something like that? It's the money through the state that also requires it to.
Remain, okay, so that would be a.
To remain in that. So, which means that those people owning that house, own the house, don't necessarily own the property. It's kind of almost more like a condominium situation.
So I think.
That's not a normal thing that they've done a bunch, but they have done some.
So the land could be separate from the house that was built on it?
No, not by deed, it could not. That's a Habitat thing.
That's the question I have.
If we funded an apartment building with this money, we would have to have some sort of restriction on their deed recorded at the county that says that this is affordable housing and will remain affordable housing. Now, there's no definition in our laws to what that means, although our law says that we have to put that restriction on. It's a part of the reason we're here.
So the key thing I'd like to.
I think one more thing, though, sidebar, is that if you use it for down payment assistance, there might be a different way of utilizing it than the deed restriction could.
That didn't make sense to me, because it's not real property.
And indeed, to your point, I'd like to point out that when we get to the slide about the first steps of the process, the very first thing that would happen is when a project comes in, it would be assessed against these legal criteria before even the committee chose which project might be the most valuable project. All of those things would be weighed at that time, and there would be experts in the room to help get us across that. Okay, and then, so having looked at this a bit, myself and planning thought that this regular, normal notice of funding availability process upon which this is based, this is the normal flow of events, and then you can see, first of all, there would be a notice of funding availability which would go out. Doesn't work on Orange.
It doesn't like that.
And then, the council would receive the NOFA for consideration, they would modify as required, they would approve it. When we get to committee work, step one would be, under phase two here, step one would be a pass or fail moment when these legal considerations are weighed up. In other words, somebody says, "I would like CET money to buy a powerboat," and we would say, "No, you may not buy a powerboat with CET money, even though that would be fine."
Unless you live on it, right?
So, and, oh, oh, no. So.
We can't find the.
Then, under step two, a scoring rubric of some sort, some sort of scoring system as yet to be figured out, would be applied to those projects which have passed that first phase. Then, the NOFA is announced with a deadline for proposal submissions. Steps one and two are explained, all the rules are explained in the notice of funding availability. And then, the Affordable Housing Commission would review the proposals for legal sufficiency with support from planning, and those that approved would go forward to be scored by the committee. So whatever the scoring rubric is which does not yet exist, we've just got projects coming in left and right, and we don't have a scoring system, hence the purpose of this meeting.
Isn't that what this is?
Yep.
Well.
I think that's a copy of the prior one, isn't it? Or is that the draft one of the previous back in November? That one never went to the Affordable Housing Commission, if I understand, nor did it go to my staff over in.
Basically, we've discussed it. At least, I think we were.
I wasn't sure you'd repeat it, that was right about the time I arrived.
This is from our packet in our October meeting or whatever.
So if I understand you correctly, you're saying this process is not needed?
Well, I think we need to go through it so that the new council, whether the part of that understands what it is, I think that's probably the real purpose.
I guess my point is just, we're not starting from nothing.
Right.
We have something that we've approved in the past and have, you know, whether it's, we talked about whether we wanted to tweak it for this next time.
So is it, would it be correct to say that, so the Affordable Housing Commission received the draft CET NOFA, and then it was scheduled to go to city council but was delayed and then had not yet occurred? Is that what I found, right?
I think that's probably.
The initial slide was talking about, it was 2023, but it was delayed. So that wasn't.
Right. So the city council hasn't had a chance to have this.
So, Peggy.
I may be remembering it wrong, but it seems like the Affordable Housing Commission actually used this rubric for two recommendations. One was that duplex, and I don't remember the other one. But it looked like you had scored according to that. Does that sound right to you, Larry?
That was not construction excise tax. It was similar, it was very similar criteria, but it was a different fund.
Got it. It was, um, thank you.
Which is also going to go out for a request for, in January, it will be.
And to be clear, the city council has the typical notice of funding availability from that other fund coming to them at the next city council hearing, but it is not the same as the CET notice of funding availability. So, the staff, we're gonna try and be as consistent as possible. Today, we're just talking about the CET notice of funding availability, not the other, the first thing that is lower.
And so I was, I was directed to try to create a structure to come up with some scoring criteria, and I successfully did that with ARPA, and I successfully did that with Council Goals. So that's what I'm trying to do.
No, that's fine. I just, I guess I'm just pointing out that, from our standpoint, at least, from the Affordable Housing Commission.
We have one.
We're not starting from nothing. We have had a criteria that, again, we were talking about for this next round. At the next meeting, we were going to see if we wanted to make any adjustments to it, but this is something that we have approved. So, again, that doesn't mean we can't, we have to, and I know that we're not the bottom line even, so, but I just, I guess that was.
And that sure do I know.
Actually, you've done a lot of work, and I hope you bring that forward today as we talk about one that we can all get on the same page about, because the real tragedy would be if the committee did a lot of work and brought it to council, and council said, "No, that's not what we had in mind," right? Because that's very demoralizing for everyone. So if we can get on the same page on criteria, I think that's great. And it may well be what you have in your hands, Larry.
Okay, so, so, having been, having been given a task to do, and my approach that I've used in the past, over 30 years of government service, quite successfully, is to ask people to weigh in and give their opinions on things that should be scoring criteria, and attempt to come up with a scoring system that everybody could be comfortable with. And so one of the ways in which, as probably you all know, you can quantify things that are hard to quantify, is if you use a Littner scale, which gives you a sense of how much something resonates with you. And I always kind of would suggest that a seven point, a scoring rubric of this with seven points is a bit more granular than a 5.1. So if, I proceeded from this concept, one point would be very dissatisfied, two dissatisfied, three slightly dissatisfied, and so on. So that's kind of where that came from. Okay, so, yes, indeed, here is an example of a very typical notice of funding availability, and you can see that when you've developed criteria for a notice of funding availability, they can be organized like this, with a point system, and that can be done.
Yeah, this is something completely different.
And then that's being talking again a little bit about, that's one way of scoring that takes a little bit of the yes, no-ness out of it, because some things have to be in shades of gray a little bit. Sorry, Platters. Some things have to be in shades of gray. So this is a way of scoring that. Okay, and are there, before we go on to the things that you have emailed me, all those good ideas that I received from everybody, any more questions generally about the legal underpinnings of CET or any of that? Thank you.
It's a half rate. It's not about that generally, but if, I was just looking at the rubric that the Affordable Housing Commission has used. Oh, I know what it was. So this scoring that you're discussing, is that for the step two?
Yes.
Because they'll have already decided this is legal and eligible separately. So that, okay, that's helpful to know. Thank you.
I think just rationally, because of all, because of the legal rules, the planning rules, there has to be kind of a two-step process. Step one is, is this project, does it meet the bar? And then the second step is, we recommend the project, or we do it all.
And isn't the goal for today, we kind of get settled around a scoring criteria? Is that kind of, we walk out the door when we've got something?
I was hoping that with goodwill to all men.
Yours, yes.
And that we would be able to come together.
That'd be great.
And come up with a scoring rubric that seems reasonable with an open heart. That's what I'm hoping for. Okay? Okay. So, moving on, let me, let me look at things one by one that you have sent to me, and as I've done in previous strategic planning sessions, I have grouped them into sort of themes. And I've got the original text that I received, and then I have some musings upon what that text might mean. Okay? Okay. And it's only fairly small fonts, but I will read it, because I just know that this is as big as our printer goes. So category one, I have broadly called this "Helping the Most People." And we received two things by email. One was, "How many low-income persons would benefit from this project, and how long-term are the benefits?" And then we also received, "Does the funded project aim to help multiple people over many years?" These are very similar themes. So I would suggest that leaving these two criteria exactly as they were written by whoever sent them to me, because I don't remember, and then scoring on the basis of these two statements would be potentially, if you like this, and of course, we can't do voting here, because it's a work section, but we can look for generally a consensus and see if we have one. So at this point, I'd like to relinquish the floor and say, are these concepts that generally resonate with the folks in this room?
Are you going to go through a series of these? Could we see them and then come around and have the.
I was afraid you were going to say that, Molly.
Is that a bad idea?
Well, I think if we see them all, we'll start weighing the merits of one against the other rather than weighing the merits on their own, but if that's what you want me to do, I will do it, and I suspect you might not get to it.
How many categories are there?
Yeah, how many are there?
And there are seven clusters.
So it will happen to the later ones, is all I'm thinking. In fairness, the first one gets a fair shot. By the time you're on five, everybody's comparing it to the first four.
Does that concept resonate with everybody here, that we'd rather see them all before we discuss them? No.
I'm okay either way. Yeah, that's my thought before she said it.
Okay, so we can't vote here, it's a work section.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah.
So what if we give each one up to, I don't know, three or four minutes and move on, and then, and then after we've seen them all, then we could compare. To me, I'd like to know what they are before I start comparing them to each other.
Okay.
It's a kind of suggestion.
Okay, so is that broadly resonate with everybody? We'll have a quick look at them, and then we'll come back. Okay. So that was the things that were sent in that I have called "Helping the Most People." The next category, I broadly called "Creating a Long-Lasting Effect." And in this, there were two items. Does the project create permanent or long-term affordability solutions, and ensure the investment is still available 10 years from now? And then, the third cluster that I noted in my arbitrary clustering was "Helping Those With the Lowest Income." And within that cluster, I identified these three emails. Does this project create additional housing for folks most on the margins? Second, does the project help those with a lower AMI category and with barriers to housing? That is, area median income. And the third one was, I think that the question should be weighted by offering different values for different AMIs, area median incomes. Here's that cluster. The fourth cluster, I have broadly called "Funds Management." Two items came in, I have put into that bucket. One is, grant the money to an organization that has demonstrated ability to perform and report out on the use of the money. The second one was, a preference should be given to regulated affordable housing projects. And then.
I'll read.
A preference should be given to regulated affordable housing projects. Category five, and now we're getting on to one that I thought didn't cluster so much with anything else. Use the funds on projects that are already in progress to aid their completion, and I called that "Guiding Projects to Completion." And then, there was one thought, which was not exactly like the others, so I called it "Inadequate Housing." Does this project bring systemic support to those in inadequate housing? And then, seven, which I have called "Generational Wealth Generation." My question for consideration is, does this provide generational wealth through homeownership? And this is some other thoughts I want to ambush you with at the end.
Excellent.
Okay.
Thank you for doing this.
You're very welcome.
Go to three, seven for me, for us.
Generational Wealth Generation, my phrase. My question for consideration is, does this provide generational wealth through homeownership? Here. Ooh, okay.
It is after all, Friday, so.
Did everybody bring their shakers? No. The children's librarian jokes don't get a lot of resonance anymore, do they? I guess just nobody sees me as a children's librarian anymore. Okay, so let's begin with category one, "Helping the Most People." My suggestion, if you like this one, if it resonates with you, without looking for a vote, of course, would be, keep these two bullets as they are, and use the two of them together as a grading criteria. What do people feel about this sort of thing?
I like the idea of it, but I think leaving it vague is going to create weird scoring within that criteria. So if we're gonna say the most people, we should say what those numbers are. Is it zero to 20, 20 to 50, something like that? You know, come up with some tighter criteria.
Make it more square.
Great call.
Yeah.
Okay, would, how does that thought resonate with everybody here?
That makes sense.
I'm struggling because I can't see it, and having gone through seven, now we're back at this one, but just with a cursory.
Shall I read it again?
Comment, well, if I've got my notes right, it's "Helping the Most People," which could include how many and for what length of time? Is that correct? Longevity?
Well, there was a, there was a length of time thing later.
Okay, I wondered, that's what I thought, there was overlap, so I.
Although this is over, over many years as well, your second.
True, true.
Then if my one is "Creating a Longer Many Years," right.
I think you split it out into two separate ones so you could, you could help a lot of people.
There's my best work. So, so if I could pursue the suggestion that you made, so there was a suggestion that perhaps this might be okay, but it could be better if there was a numbering system that was a hardcoded integer. Right? 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 Does that, does that thought resonate with people?
Or is your scoring will be all over the place?
So, let's, let's then think about that a bit more. Could anyone suggest a sentence that might encapsulate something like that? That would have hard numbers.
It needs to be in context with the answer. So if your answers are very dissatisfied, or is that what it says the first question?
Well, the thing is, though, Bill, the way I've written this is quite a good way, because it says, "How satisfied are you that the project under consideration meets these criteria?" criteria?" So you see, whenever you define what that sentence is, this language will still work. So in other words, if you say the criteria is whatever the mathematics might be, then we could say, for example, if we all felt that it was more than fifty people...
So it's over X amount of years.
Right, right. Then after that, the scoring system would, would still work.
Right.
Right. So, yes.
I don't think it's a specific number. What I thought, what I heard was that you would give it points on a graded scale. Like, if you helped fifty people, you'd get more points than if you only helped five.
And we could do that too. Because when I, when I get to the, the median income one, that's exactly what I did. So, we could also take the scoring scale and assign numbers of human beings to each number.
Maybe not.
Does that, does that sound interesting?
Yeah, I'm just trying to figure out, like, if the next one is "Creating a Long-Lasting Effect," the sentence you're saying is combining this category and category two, which I'm fine with, I like, I like that too, but like, which one is it now?
Well, to, to answer your question or your comment, what, what it sounds like to me is, "Helping the Most People," we would abandon the language, the sentences, and we would goodbye vernacular, and we would go, "One point, this many humans, two points, this many households, three points, this many households." So, that would be how we would get at this concept, but using your mathematical suggestion.
Right, so, I'll be the devil's advocate of my own question. So really, and there's the one category where thirty-five percent and the down payment assistance, like, you're not really going to ever help as many people with the amount of money that we have. Or, in the same funding round, you could, like, let's say, help five versus an apartment complex of eighty, you know, but, sorry, scoring those same types of projects, the five, the fifty percent funds and the thirty-five percent against each other, or are they separate?
Well, actually, I'm, I'm not in charge and I'm not scoring anything.
Can I, can I weigh in here?
Yeah.
I think that's the crux of why we're here today. Are we interested in, uh, the proposal that, that currently came up from the citizens to city council was that we give money to, uh, YCAP, who's actually running a program, they've been running for some time, for rehabilitation of mobile homes in parks in the city of Newburgh.
Newland County Housing Authority.
I'm sorry?
Housing Authority.
Yeah. Oh, I'm sorry, that's YCAP. Housing Authority, thank you.
Yeah.
Uh, so the program's in place, they have been doing this successfully, and they used up all the money. So the thinking was, we could jump in and fund their project and let them continue to do good. So the question you just asked is, is absolutely, I think, crucial that we decide whether or not we want to spend a little bit of money on individual people, which absolutely helps the person that, that gives the money, but as you just stated, doesn't help a great deal of people. So, in my mind, we should decide how much of this fund we're going to allocate for small projects, and how much of this fund we're gonna allocate for something big.
Well, to a certain extent, the fifty percent and the thirty-five percent could, you know, the fifty percent is to fund developer incentives, which maybe is more of the bigger projects than whatever, and the thirty-five percent still, you know, developer incentives and affordable housing programs, affordable housing programs could be those things like, like you're talking about with them.
Because totally, the developer incentive is adding more housing to, to the pool rather than rehabbing, which I, I'm all for rehabbing mobile homes that are, I actually agree nineteen-seventy-six, but it doesn't add any additional housing.
I agree with what you said. I would just want a little more, um, and I also would want more, uh, research on, under these other programs, if, if it can, if the fund can be used for already existing housing rehab, that's not, it's not regulated essentially, you know? So, just to be reassured that it's used correctly.
Well, this, this might be a good time for you to weigh in. We have been looking at this exact question because of these things that are coming up. Enlighten us. What can the money be used for?
Well, so it has to be used for either developer incentive or for affordable housing. And to meet the affordable housing standard, it has to meet the definition of affordable housing, so it would have to, there's a bit of income...
Right, could be restrictions on...
Yeah, and you would have to, you'd have to feel as though, um, you can administratively get the process to get the information that you need for the, you're hitting after the standard for affordable.
But can it be for existing, like, the current affordable housing structure for, for homes, or does it have to be adding?
Actually, given that they have rent buydowns in some cities, that has to be...
That's the old part of the...
I don't think it is. It is like existing.
So, can the...
So, my, so we could use the money for the rehabilitation of the mobile homes in parks and stuff, we can be able for that?
Not really, I mean, I don't have, you know, I think it's still a...
Sorry, do you have that? Well, that's why, I mean, that's why I asked the question, I wanted, because if it is, I would like to see some of that money go to help those people.
So, that would be one proposal.
And I have one more, would it need to be, would it need to be restricted then? I mean, just not, should be, it's just, I'm wondering.
I don't think it is.
So, I would, I might opine that, that would be a phase one thing, that that's the phase of clearing whether or not proposal had sufficiency. And we're currently debating phase, what the next phase would be for scoring. So I certainly agree with everything you've said, we would have to look at those regulations and rules very carefully for each project to make sure that it was allowed, a point we would get to this.
Is it not true that we have determined in the last few weeks that virtually nothing is ruled out because of the rules in there? I mean, uh, it says developer incentives, but it also goes on to say another types of projects, but there's that in front of him, I don't, but that one, that one word is, doesn't limit the whole thing to just that use.
Doesn't say not limited to, right. So it opens the door a little bit more, I think.
The question is, who weighs in? So we know who weighs in in planning, you go to D L C D or whatever, who weighs in here? How do we get, what you wouldn't want to do is spend three hundred thousand on something and then have the state say, "So we audited you and that's not an acceptable use, and you city must return three hundred thousand," that would be...
This wouldn't be in the state.
Yeah.
We would get sued in civil, in civil court.
Okay.
And have to defend our position.
So the state wouldn't have anything to do with it.
Right.
See, it was, there's a process for challenging an expenditure of the fund, whether how it was done within the restriction.
And it's not, and it's not, it's, you, uh...
Who do you...
It, it is, it, it's a specific type of action that is difficult to bring.
Is it done through the circuit court or is it...
Okay. So, we had a discussion on the table about adding potentially a number of households to this, then the person who suggested it did a little self-dribble advocacy, a little self-reflection, and then wanted to discuss whether or not that was necessarily a good idea. Could I hear any other thoughts about, should we make this type of thing, "Helping the Most People," should we weigh this by households? Or should we not do this at all?
Um, if only the fifty percent is eligible for developer incentive and other stuff, and that means that, is that right, or is that...
Yeah.
Or fifty percent. So that, um...
Well, fifty percent is the...
...out. I don't...
I know, it's a little confusing because both can be used as developer incentives, but only the thirty-five can be used for...
For affordable housing programs.
So if fifty percent is for to fund developer incentives, which is what the quiet indication is, that only leaves us thirty-five percent, or what is that, three hundred sixty-seven thousand, for affordable housing.
There's no period after developer housing. Go read the rest of that sentence.
For developer incentives and affordable housing, so either or. So I would simply suggest that fifty percent is for developer incentives, and thirty-five percent can be used for either, in order to get some help, for example, for these folks living in mobile homes that are just deteriorating, the point of becoming loco, let's do affordable housing only. We can choose to, thirty-five percent of it for affordable housing only, and fifty also only for developer incentive.
So, so any process, um, point, Peggy. That, I believe, if I follow correctly, would be, would mean that we would have to have, uh, we would have two sets of criteria, one for each bucket, so we would go through the process sort of twice. Does that, does that resonate with people?
I mean, I, that-ish, but I think that I can see where you're going. I think we shouldn't lose sight that the first fifty percent is developer incentive to create affordable housing.
Right.
So the second one could be the thirty-five percent for the rent buydowns, down payment assistance, foreclosure prevention, because we can't sit here and say it's just gonna go by that program. We thought that was, that could apply. All these other criteria could still apply and compete.
That's, that's my concern, is that...
Some of these are kind of...
You don't want to decide on the mobile home thing today because that actually...
And that has...
...here in the process that we make that decision.
Well, here's, I guess, here's my, I'm, I'm a little uncomfortable personally with knowing a project and we're trying to fit criteria to that project. I guess I'm, I, I'm more interested in spending my time if we want, you know, if we're gonna do this right.
That's not my profession being here today.
Yeah, we know.
I'm just saying, that's what it feels like right now, you're trying to, trying to find a way, because we like this project, I think it's great, I don't know if it fits us or not. To me, we need to develop criteria that we believe in, that fits what the, what the, and the law and everything else that, you know, was passed, and, and then projects will fit in it or not, you know? Now, again, we may want to have difference for those two...
Categories.
Categories, because there could be very different kinds of projects under them. But, but again, to think about, oh, we got this proposal, let's see, how does this one fit? No, that's not...
And I honestly had not heard about this angle.
Right, no, I know.
No, it just came up and it, I mean, it makes, yeah, I mean, there are going to be smaller type projects that help people with homeownership, and they're just not going to have the larger of them.
Right.
And I agree with you there.
Well, it's, it's, it's trickier than that because last year, you guys went through the process of trying to give out money from the other fund, and it took you a whole year to get around to actually deciding whether or not you wanted to give the money out, to the point that one of the applicants had decided he didn't want to be part of it again. And then once, if you would have approved it, we, we would have still had a time period before we could write a check. So, the problem is that if we allow projects access to all the funds that are small projects that can happen quicker, then that means they're all gonna get to the process first, and they'll be considered before some of the more legacy-type projects, is what I'm calling, which would take maybe a year or two to go through the, the process for them to even get them to where they can apply.
But I guess the other part is, you've decided against construction tax like tax for the future.
Correct.
You've already decided that. So there's, you've already decided not to go ahead with construction tax. As a, as a council, you've voted on that, you've decided on that. So what's sitting there is some money that was already collected that needs to be spent, not in the next ten years probably, but in the next couple of years, you know, and hopefully the most usefully as possible in generating affordable housing. But, you know, this fund isn't gonna keep building, there's a, there's a limited amount of money that's there, you know, and so, you're not gonna get a bunch of proj, you know, it's, if you're still talking about this five years from now, we've all failed.
Yeah.
Because we have not helped affordable housing in Newburgh, you know, if we're, if we're kicking it down the road that far, I guess. That's the, that's the thing for me. The other part, I guess, I was gonna say, is, you know, we're going, we're talking about these almost as if they're mutually exclusive, you know, we have to decide if we like this one, or do we... No, I know you're not, but that's kind of how it feels like, you know, and, and again, I mean, like, we have in the, you know, I mean, we had one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight scored criteria that we already had, and five that were kind of the minimum requirements, you had to, you know, or, or you don't really even qualify. So, again, we can have, we can have as many as we want, you know, of these if we feel like, I, I guess then, I'm sorry, then I'm gonna shut up in a little bit. But, um, the flip side of, for me, is because it's, there's only a certain pot of money and it's not gonna keep growing, like, okay, just, do we really need to spend a huge amount of time making a whole new criteria or whatever, you know? So, are we wasting our time there?
Okay, so the suggestion is that we're wasting our time. So, to somewhere I'm grateful, are we?
Okay, but it is a kind of a question on the table, if, if, if there's a, if there's a body of council that has an idea that they feel confident with that was brought forward last meeting, are we wasting everyone's time if that is the project that's going to be chosen? Are we just dotting our i's and crossing our t's from a legal perspective to be here to say? I think that's the question being asked, and with the conversation...
Probably the one.
I'm not saying I, I'm fine, but, but, you know, I think we should be honest with the group of, you know, what conversations have happened if we're gonna sidebar about a specific project.
I think it works.
I'll, I'll grab a seat for myself.
Yeah.
I saw, I saw, I saw at the last, some meeting, there, we had a, we had this, I don't know if you guys knew this, this guy, um, came forward and said, "This is a really good project, we would like council to please make a motion to ask them for a proposal." And we discussed it, we said it's not appropriate for us to ask for this, but it feels like at least a couple of folks on council are really wanting this project, and so it's kind of driving our conversation in a direction. Instead of trying to get to a, a neutral criteria, somebody hasn't come to council with a proposal yet that you might also like, and you've already decided to fund this one. So it, that's the, I think that's the jive in the room that's bothering people. So, have we decided that, I mean, you've got, if you've got four votes, then the rest of us don't need to look at other proposals, right? You can just...
Are you considering me one of those votes, by the way?
Well, I, no, I don't think that you are. I don't, I don't know, but there's been a lot of discussion about...
I'm not, sorry, Mike.
...for money, but, go ahead.
Okay. I happen to like that, that project, but I'm not willing to throw a hand grenade in here and blow everything up. I'm just saying, it meets the criteria and we don't have to do anything out of the city. That organization already has everything in place, and I'm not saying, and I haven't said, that we should take the whole five hun, or three hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars and give it to them, I'm not saying that at all. I just said, hey, you've got an organization that's already been doing it, they have contractors lined up, it's, it's in their wheelhouse, they've already gone down the process, why not give them some money to help these people that are, that's, that's all I'm saying. I'm not saying that we should do this, I just think it happens to be a good idea.
I haven't been any...
I'm not wanting to give all of it.
I, I, I was asked to moderate this, and I'm going to speak for a moment, I'm sorry. And then you can speak. So, I was asked to moderate this meeting. Okay? And I'm gonna say a couple of words. First of all, if there was some kind of fix in that this was being tailored to fit a project, I would probably know about that, and you have my word of honor that that's not what's going on here, to my knowledge.
And that's not...
And I, and I will not have my integrity challenged.
No, well, that's, that's not how it's happening. That's what's going on, it's, the conversation drifted that way.
Yes, but, but I'm going to say those words, and that's it.
We all need to put our feelings aside, it's not about...
Sure, but I don't believe anyone's like that, that's not what's happening, to the best of my knowledge.
So, I honestly think that the state made the thirty-five percent category so that communities could put funds towards already existing programs such as this, because each community had its... Cause each community having their own things that they do. So I don't think it's a problem to have an idea, but you have to do a NOFA and score competitively too.
Well, I think I think the way I phrased my question gave the wrong impression. I was using the mobile home parts stuff as an example, but I could see where fifty percent has to be used for developer incentives. The thirty-five percent says no. So we are, we do have a lot more money in the developer incentive. And I don't know, maybe does that? If your follow up was, do we need criteria for each then? I don't know.
Well, we we can't, to be honest, there's kind of three things on the table, but I'll defer to Clay first.
I was gonna say, the way that I've seen the NOFA structure and the Affordable Housing Committee people who have the experience with the well set record, but I don't get it just right. But typically the scoring rubric is to see who scores the highest. And the only ones that are getting there are either development or incentive related projects or programs. And if you get a higher score, you get you get access to the money first. But when money is not available for that category anymore, then if that if you've only scored developer incentives and there's suddenly there's, for for example. Since there's gonna be a fewer number of dollars available for affordable housing programs overall. If that gets gobbled up by high scoring programs first, at some point there's no program money left. And the only eligible programs that might remain higher, developer incentives. So you might have another affordable housing program that scores relatively high, but that bucket of money ran out. And so now we go to only the ones that are left on the list that are for. So we don't have to restrict it. I think that that's something that could be done, but it would potentially be. One view might be that you're compromising your own scoring by doing that because you've kind of excluded high scores from access to certain parts of the money. I also wanted to mention that if we want, we actually had to do some research on mobile home parts or manufactured homes associated with that nineteen seventy-eight date, which I think is supposed to be nineteen seventy-six date. So we can share that if we would like. But again, we don't wanna refocus back on something that that is too 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 in the weeds. The other thing I wanted to mention was that if there are example programs, whatever they are, that people like. And that they've seen promising, I think that's a good opportunity to turn those into criteria. And so to really step back and think, why is this promising? Because it already exists. Why is this promising? Because it has a higher level of feasibility for some reason or another. Those are perfect, those are right for a criteria, but you have to take that individual project out of it to turn it into a criteria. And I think that's what that Affordable Housing Commission's tri- degree or NOFA exercises previously, whether it's the standard one or the CBT draft one. So it's the Affordable Housing Commission folks, if I got that wrong in the context.
No, I think that's right. And and frankly, for, you know, what we've dealt with so far. We've never dealt with actual scoring of construction anxiety tax ones. Cause it hasn't, I don't, it hasn't been approved yet, you know, and now it's kind of moved anyway. We've we've done the Affordable Housing or uh trust fund. But that's a way smaller amount of money. And we haven't tended to have a whole bunch of applications for it, you know. And in that case, it's more, okay, we have sixteen thousand dollars, you know, how do you split that up? Where here, I mean, I think, you know, we have the ability, even with just a one time thing without money still going in, to make hopefully a difference. You know, maybe to get a project. A maybe of even a bigger project going or something, or or somebody that's willing to, you know, to do that development because it it now pencils out for them because, you know, we we have this chunk of money. And certainly I was not, I was not challenging your integrity in it. I I I just wanna make sure that in, you know, and again, in the discussion, some people find it it's start, it's certain to sound like, okay, wait a minute, we we kinda like this. Again, I think, yeah, I think we need to decide what we think's important. That's our criteria. And then apply it to specifics rather than the other.
Well, I appreciate that, Larry, and you know I would never run a sham with those guys.
Yeah.
Okay, so I think that there were kind of, first of all, I'll be honest, marginally overwhelmed right now with all the different thoughts. I'm gonna try my best to summarize the three things that I think are on the table. One thought was that we may need to look at criteria separately for each pot of money. Or the other thought was we would just have one scoring system for both pots of money. Or frankly, the third thought that was on the floor was we could just use these criteria that we already have from another committee. These are three different thoughts. Now, can someone help me figure out how we could choose between these three thoughts?
And and I don't know if those are all mutually exclusive even of those three. I guess I what I would suggest is we have a criterion that we put together. Let's start with that. And then see how these things fit into it. Some of them may be covered already in our criteria. Some of them may be things that we think, those aren't covered and we really like that, we should add that. And, you know, that, I mean, me.
Can we get a copy of the?
She's making copies of what I had anyway.
Excellent, yeah, I think it's your. Because Larry, I was just looking at it and going through, okay, this one maps to that.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, some of them do and some of them don't. I mean, I I'm not sure that any of them really spoke to this, you know, how many.
Go ahead. Okay, so. I don't wanna throw water on the work, hard work that you've put into this, Will. But I'm also thinking, the Affordable Housing Committee, you guys already have a criteria. Because there was two projects like Peggy mentioned earlier that came to the council. We saw that criteria and it seems like you guys kinda already have a foundational set. Why not use that and move forward or tweak it a little bit off of what Will has put up? But let's not maybe try and start from the beginning and go through.
Do you mean getting you out of the hall seat, Mike?
No, that would be awesome. So I mean, that's that's just what it seems.
I like.
Logical, why why strike your scratch when you kinda already have that one there? Let's just work with that. And maybe it would help us if we pick pick two things just for discussion and say, okay. If these two things came to the Affordable Housing Committee and then it was passed on to the council. We all have the same criteria, it meets the criteria, boom, we pass it. So make it simple and not not complicated, but we already kinda have a framework.
Since we, okay, so just to restate slightly, um having having been directed to create a system. This was my best attempt, okay? But if we want to have a beginning point of this system. Then my suggestion would rather than spend a lot of time today going through these one by one. Because we we weren't expecting that, we weren't ready for it. Staff is not ready for that, okay? I would suggest instead, maybe the Affordable Housing Commission. Viewing this through the lens of these new concepts, which I will forward to everybody by email. Consider these scoring criteria and the new ideas and come up with their own scoring rubric. That they can then forward to council. What is the what is, how does that sound, folks?
I think that makes a lot of sense. There's some things, if we have, if we say let's have seven or eight. Well, there's seven or eight here, these are slightly different, but they could be melted. Um, I would I would like personally see a scale of one to seven for that, you know, like a scale versus a such a ten or like that, that's the most. Anyway, I I think taking the best of what's already been developed by the Affordable Housing Commission and taking a look at these would be great. And not having these memorized or in summary, it makes it really hard to totally evaluate.
So the thought is perhaps Affordable Housing Commission meets again, starts with the list it already had. Considers adding a Lickert scale or something a bit more statistically relevant to the process. Comes up with some statistics for it. Hashes it around with some of these new ideas that were sent in, develops a rubric and then forwards it on to council for consideration. How does that sound?
How do you get this?
I I think that's fun. I mean, I think we were planning in our next meeting anyway to do, like I said, to revisit it and and all that. Um, so, yeah, I I, you know, the the thing, the thing that it does is it just pushes things down the road, which is just, to do it right, it takes some time and I think that's okay. Just with the understanding that, yeah, if there's things hanging out there right now, just our process, your process. The way things are, it's not fast, you know, and so.
Although, could we could we hold that from him? Cause Christie was wanting to add.
Okay.
Oh, I I was just trying to mention, um, it might be worthwhile to maybe direct staff. That develops on uh with the renovation at media or yeah, I think it's.
Sounds good. Would you guys be willing to be that fabulous staff?
Yep.
What is it that she suggested?
I wasn't sure I captured that. Instead of them doing it, you're going to do it?
No, there's Christie, could you re- repeat further?
Yeah, so I was thinking. No, no, not at all. Um, procedurally help to maybe document this would be to have a resolution that directed staff to put together based on input. Those criteria that can then be loaded on.
Renovation from that Affordable Housing Commission or staff?
For staff, who's helping, she's saying.
Getting a resolution on the agenda for this got to that. That's a, that's a.
Yep.
Oh, okay. So you guys do the work and we get it scheduled so that.
So that we know the way.
We schedule it and tell it, right? Got it.
Yes.
Hi, um, I thought this was already answered. I'm curious if someone could speak to the rationale between moving from the up to X number of points versus a Licker scale.
Whenever Will Worthy's asked to organize something, uh, he uses the methods that he has successfully implemented in thirty years of doing strategic planning. Mostly in the library environment, I have to confess, mostly libraries. But I've always found that these sorts of scales are more quantifiable when you, yeah, that's an edge case, maybe it helps forty people, maybe it only helps thirty. I'll score that at a six rather than a yes, no toggle or a binary decision. I've just found that to be successful, but it was only a suggestion.
Well, and I, there's things I like about that. The other, as I'm looking at these, the other side of it is is that some things we've given ten points and some things we've given five points because we value them higher than others. And so that's how to, you know, just how to meld those together so that there is some level of, you know, cause just because I meet this one, maybe that's kind of a lower level one. Okay, you know, get the full, you know, if if in the end we're adding up your points.
To build on, to build on Larry's point, uh, for example, sometimes when we do our recruiting in NeoGov, we sometimes use points weighting systems for job hiring.
Yeah.
But we might weigh a CDL license much more if it's a job prerequisite.
And I would look at that as, I think that what Larry's talking about is weighting of those criteria. He's saying these are high value. So they get a one square, but what Will's talking about, the Licker scale is really a calibration of the responses. So if you're trying to do a marital value associated with impact that exists, then you can make sure that your Affordable Housing Commission and later your city council is top. I know that this is two points instead of five points because it is clearly met or not met.
Right, yeah.
So I think it's a calibration.
Yeah, you can have a multiplier or something that, yeah.
So my understanding as a pre-existing one, it is possible for a project to score zero. If we score every category a zero, the total could be a zero. Whereas on a scale like this, they're gonna get the minimum is however many categories there are.
And of course, this was, this was me coming up with an arbitrary metric. So the the very dissatisfied in many of these scales is often rated at a zero weighting. You can you can make it as what you want.
Could be zero to six, it could be whatever.
Doesn't have to be any such weight.
Yeah, what's nice about that is I know when you came to council and said, why did you give this one three out of five and this one five? And it's hard over time to remember why, but if you define somehow it doesn't have to be that. It's all five, four, one, two, three, four, five.
And the cool thing about this is there are huge lexicons online of representations of these scales for value, quality, honesty, satisfaction. Any human value, you'll find that there are, there are scales out there that you can literally copy from. Well, I think what I've gathered from this is that we have a path forward, thanks to Christie's brilliant suggestion. Which would be that we have a resolution step first to occur at a city council session. And that would launch us on our journey to develop a rubric. And that the commission would do the lifting on developing a rubric. And it would pay close attention to the existing scoring structure. It may or may not decide to include a system like this. And it will also have a look at the emailed suggestions that were sent in to synthesize a really good scoring system.
Yeah, great.
One last, um, can we put a schedule in place? Cause that I wanna address Larry's concern about it. It's going to move out, but it doesn't have to move out indefinitely. So could we try and commit to?
Yeah, how how often do you guys meet?
We meet quarterly.
Every three months?
Trying to.
The typically the the regular meetings are quarterly.
I mean, we can have a call meeting.
Special meetings can be scheduled as needed. The next meeting is scheduled for January twenty-third.
We can have a extra resolution ready for the first meeting in January here.
Right.
I'm sure.
Which was regular, I said, and then if you guys meet in late January, if your agenda isn't already full.
That gives us a meeting, you know, it's not on this next one you get.
Correct, so we'd have to once again explode into action. As we do, the holidays never mean anything to me, so we just keep working.
How is it that we couldn't do the resolution under new business? This next meeting, Monday, probably, couldn't we? I mean, is there a legal?
That. I would ask the staff to see if they got the time to be able to do that.
Yeah, you wanna.
I I would say.
You wanna work the weekend, ready?
The meeting, the meeting on Monday is not to be possible.
Okay.
Yeah, I I would say just have your colleagues.
In January, we don't. That too.
That's fine, I'm just saying it's not hard to do.
And frankly, we're gonna go.
But I think the first meeting in January, which is January the second. And I might brainstorm a few of it to see, you know, some more thoughts on the wording or.
And with with respect to the fact that the Affordable Housing Commission typically meets quarterly. City council or Affordable Housing Commission have thoughts on it. Cause I don't know if the CBT, you know, but creation process doesn't look right at all. It's not an area working here for us, so you can be focused on that. So how much time and effort is creating this initial draft that created November twenty twenty-two? What time and effort does that take for that to arrive? One meeting was a several days.
To make your last note.
I I mean, I think because we already have a framework, I think we could do it in one. What, I mean, frankly, most of our meetings are, tend to be reporting of things and and if, I mean, I know there's, again, there's certain things you just gotta do and that's the how you gotta do them. But if if we could make sure that, you know, we we understand that a good chunk of the meeting is gonna be dealing with this. Cause this is important and we need to get it done.
Could could I make an ask that we do something like schedule a a second meeting a month later as opposed to a weekly meeting?
Yeah, yeah.
If it works for the Affordable Housing Commission. Cause that would let us bring the new content, let the Affordable Housing Commission kind of workshop that content with staff. And then staff can go integrate those comments. We bring it back a month later. And when that comes back, you say, fantastic, it looks great, we're making really good, hopefully not too many. And we take that kind of version and are able to proceed forward to the city council. So it takes a bit of time, but not generally too long.
Yeah, I think that's right, reasonable.
That would be great.
I mean, if if we're going to be having several things coming through the uh Affordable Housing Committee. Would there be a possibility you guys could meet on a regular monthly basis, once a month? Just so that we're not setting six, eight months down the road waiting to get some something. Just so that we're not setting six, eight months down the road waiting to get some, something that somebody has sent in to get back to us?
Well, we, we did talk about if this program was going to go forward and continue, that we would probably need to meet more often than quarterly. You know, with, with that idea in mind, it's, it's probably more like a called meeting. You know, I mean, our regular meetings and then if it's something that's in between that we need, it's, it's going to be long enough, you know, we just met, now this came in, that we would see if we can have a called meeting to, you know, to deal with it at that point. I don't, I don't know that we want to schedule monthly meetings when mostly we're not going to have the business. I mean, other than we, we have a certain task right now.
A called meeting has to come, yes.
That, that's not logical.
There's a, who can call a special meeting of the advisory boards?
Or the chair of it, so that can be.
Some committees, some committees go say that by a vote of four, they can also call one. But we have a chair, I have to check with it to let it encode and do it as well. But some of them do say that as well.
Actually, do these have to be noticed as well? Okay. So could I make a suggestion, something we used to do at Intel is that you have a monthly standing meeting. When you have no agenda, the meeting is canceled. In that way, the noticing becomes very simple for city staff. And it's simple for your calendars because it's already on your calendar and it's likely to be canceled if there's something in.
Our recorder does not think that makes for license or.
So doesn't that make it simpler?
Because if it's canceled, I also have to make a notice of cancellation. So sometimes, I mean, I just need a week's notice.
Okay.
I've, I've got a very rough, rough kind of next six to eight months to work. One additional meeting for the Affordable Housing Commission with bits of both for January and July and then the city council. I can go through that really quickly with everyone and I can put it on a poster if you guys want to see the general progress. And I'm happy to have to be told that that should change. Do folks want to see that?
Yes.
Okay.
You want to clean slate me?
Yep.
Thank you.
Well, I'm trying to make a clarification, I'm calling you from Delta five. With the NOPA, there isn't, it's as they come in for this, all notices are due by noon one. Because I realize if we did that, we could have funding lag with the weather.
Since I would be writing, and the Affordable Housing Commission is probably more familiar with the NOPA I am, and some of the.
We haven't, the other one has been rolling. I don't know what was decided. A one-time issue makes more sense to me, but I don't know what was decided.
The, the most recent NOPA, including the one that's going to come to city council for the standard, uh, Newburg Affordable Housing Trust. That typically has two, two ways of approaching it. Certain things are due at a certain closure deadline window. And then other items are left rolling. And so it's, it's limited. Actually, if a normal person reads how we tear everything out, it is, in my mind, incredibly confusing because it's intended to be open-ended and allow people lots of different ways to access the funds. So it's by design and it's on purpose, once you can parse it out. But it, it can be hard to follow in the straight language of the narrative. But they, they essentially take two approaches both. I think it's either a thirty or sixty day window. Affordable Housing Commission, do you all recall?
I was just thinking, since it's a very limited amount of funds that is not continuing to grow, just to ask the question, would it make sense for a request to come in by? Isn't it reasonable?
It would make sense to me.
And then you're looking at all of them.
Yeah. I mean, if you, yeah, if you wait and turn it in later, chances are there may not be many of them.
Yeah.
I mean, it's in their best interest to apply at the start.
And then everybody who's like, gets eaten up.
Right, right.
Which is one of the reasons that, in my opinion, we need to designate what we're going to do with big projects and small projects. Because, for instance, the, what is it, the missing middle housing fund? Has a fund right now, they've got two million dollars to spare. They've been working on that for a couple of years and they finally got your proposals in. So are we going to hold up all these minor proposals I'm going to call on until we have given chance for some developers to come up with a big project? Or do we want to decide, oh, come on, we're going to allocate a certain amount of money for this kind of project and a certain time for that project?
So are you talking about the, the five hundred and twenty-five thousand part of this for development? Because we can't touch that other than development.
That's really not true. I mean, the people who have been looking into this over the last couple of weeks have determined that that rule shouldn't go broadly.
That we could use that down here, I'll give it.
Yes. Yeah. So that's what we're trying to, that's what I'm trying to determine is what, what do we really want to do with this money?
So you're talking legal review? Legal review?
I think.
Yeah, Jake has been involved.
I think the fifty percent has to be for developer. I'm supposed to say that, but it's thirty five.
Actually, it's the developer incentive or Affordable Housing.
No, that's the thirty five. That's the thirty five. The, the fifty says developer incentives.
So you're saying the fifty percent has to, has to be for developers? Different than the thirty five percent?
Correct.
Right. The thirty five percent has to come with one prudency, it can be for either.
Actually, it's what it says, it's developer incentive or affordable housing program.
That's the thirty five percent.
Oh, so the fifty, no.
Unless it's a five hundred K for a developer.
It's nothing.
Nothing.
It's true.
I know.
On a big project, it's nothing.
Actually, I think if we set a date and get projects in, and then if we don't give it all away, we can have another NOPA and try again. I, it's not a lot of money. One large project could wipe it out.
Correct. And if we do a bunch of small projects first, then we won't even get to that.
Well, if they all have to be in by a certain date, then we'll look at them all. I think that was what Peggy was asking, makes sense.
It does make sense.
To Larry's point earlier, he, you know, this, we're not going to do this anymore. Well, that's not really what we said. What we determined or what we said when we sunsetted the current program is, hey, if we can do some really good things with this, we may bring it back. That was part of the discussion anyway. But, I mean.
Glad to hear that. That's that for you guys.
Clay, didn't you have a way of differentiating, you were saying, between the smaller projects and the larger ones? I, I didn't quite understand how you were describing that. But does that sort of, could it fix the thing, this conversation between like having two separate ground criteria or two programs versus one?
You don't know that I did.
Something about how like the smaller projects.
I just don't remember.
Now, I think that, I think, I think there is some way to think about criteria. Like if it's a impact per dollars requested or something type of a metric. But I don't know that, I don't think that's actually.
That's hasn't come up yet.
I'm, excuse me, one minute. Get the thing, I'm almost there.
A tentative schedule would be brilliant. Because then we'd, we'd hold ourselves accountable to getting it done.
So what this comes down to for me is, I would like to see us do something, a legacy project. Some good project that's going to provide wealth for per generation into our community. And if we're going to do that, then we're going to eliminate all the other projects. So. How does it even lie?
Thank you. The, the scoring should help us figure that out, like, because we'll see them all.
Shall we adjourn?
Well, I think, I'm going to take a picture of this when he's done, because this is a good general timeline.
He had a call, he had a meeting.
Clark wants to explain it, I would think.
So, what we, what I would suggest, and this is, this is rough, so we'd have to actually make sure it like works for things like reviews and whatnot. But first city council meeting in January, we get the resolution directing staff to work with Affordable Housing Commission to come up with a draft NOPA or a, a CET NOPA coming back to city council. Then Affordable Housing Commission that same month, but later in the month, gets that first draft CET NOPA and gets the first chance at reviewing that with staff. Staff is going to take direction from the city manager as well as take the existing draft CET NOPA, combine those to the extent we think we can, based on what we're seeing from the information we receive, anything additional we get. So if the city manager's got stuff that hasn't been brought up as relevant stuff, we'll take that into account as much as we can. Then, once that, we'll get feedback from kind of workshopping that with the Affordable Housing Commission. Instead of waiting till our quarterly meeting, there will be a special meeting planned in February. And that's going to go and basically bring back the refined draft. We'll sign some name to differentiate it, so version two point O will come forward. And so the Affordable Housing Commission will basically say, did staff get it right at this point? Be able to continue tweaking that as needed to the extent that it's been resolved. Hopefully, if it all moves forward according to plan, it would be able to be adopted by the Affordable Housing Commission to get consensus there. And that point, we'll be able to move to city council. Staff will bring the Affordable Housing Commission adopted CET NOPA to the city council, who is hopefully going to approve it. Once that is approved, so that will take us into March. Based on first two meetings occurring in January, second Affordable Housing Commission meeting occurring in February, going to city council approximately March. These are all rough, if we can make them tighter, that would be fine. But I don't want to make it too tight because that might be non-reasonable. The, and then the following, once it goes to city council, if city council is supportive, what's come out of the Affordable Housing Commission? We can go ahead and open that to project if it remains open for what I'll just tentatively say is sixty days. We'll probably actually look at it, make sure it's no shorter than our typical NOPA process. But, you know, keep that open for sixty days, that's going to take us to June when that window closes. We'd be able to either schedule something towards the end of June or just go to the regularly scheduled Affordable Housing Commission in July and bring forward those projects at that time. And during that meeting, the Affordable Housing Commission will score the project and figure out who do we have in there? And then hopefully we get consensus and the scoring process is so rock solid from the NOPA that we created.
Which it will be.
That it goes right to the city council. And then the city council can say, great, this is the thing that we thought looked good. And we can go ahead and start awarding something.
And when the projects come in, who, who does, make sure they're feasible before, in other words, legally?
The, so who kind of checks that the minimum threshold criteria are met? We can go after, after the application material. Staff would probably, what I would imagine, is that anything that's submitted, we would hand over to the Affordable Housing Commission. But if staff did not feel it meets the minimum threshold criteria, then we will advise the Affordable Housing Commission and we will say that, in staff's opinion, those can be skipped.
Staff what?
That's why it's nice that, that you have, the window closes and you don't try and do a meeting right then. If you've got all this stuff, you need time to look at it.
Yeah. And we need that sort of stuff. And also to make sure that it's not just a hot mess coming in at the last minute and that it, and the Affordable Housing Commission is now stuck with something. Not to mention that if we have time, I wouldn't, depending on the number of submissions we get, if the quantity of stuff is tied up, we can speed those out earlier than the typical publication. We'll just publish the agenda and materials early so they get more review time since that's largely what we're talking about. So, can I start with concerns from the Affordable Housing Commission first?
I don't have a number of links.
What's that?
Larry.
Larry Hatch. Well, I know that. But any other, that's not the old Affordable Housing.
Handle Larry.
Yeah. I felt like I could see both, both of you wanting to say things, though. And I didn't see Kate do the same time as Kevin.
I have a question. I mean, my, my term ended, so I just hope you have someone else.
Oh.
To be in there.
Well, ten minutes present, I need to know what. I haven't heard about.
Based on your experience.
I mean, it does seem like it's time for someone else to come in. For a while now, but.
So on that appointment survey made Monday night.
Okay.
There are people filling in the two.
Because someone's been doing a smashing job on recruiting.
It's not easy, good job.
So let's go ahead. Casey, you're about to win personal left. Could it be on the Affordable Housing Committee?
Yep.
So, Larry, you feel? How much?
Unlike, so for work and timeline, is this realistic, unrealistic? Are there any glaring things missing?
I'm always eager to move faster. I know it's an advisory board, you know, we don't meet very many times a year, but I'm in favor of anything that kind of gets us going as fast as we can, knowing that some projects, our inability to make a timely decision made it to where it wasn't feasible for them. And calling for the deadline week too soon may really, you know, empty those larger projects that need more time, so.
So is there anything we see as a problem here that we could move around or do differently? Things that we don't need, things.
So the window of time between when the applications are due and staff reviews legal minimum and Housing Commission reviews stuff for the first time, is that window big enough for staff to say, you claimed this, do you have documentation to support it? Because I found that when we were reviewing it, sometimes I didn't feel like I could just take the application's word for it. I wanted some kind of documentation that proved your claiming.
So that verification process, when that has happened before, is that typically staff draws forward and the Affordable Housing Commission asks for that? Or staff look into it before it comes to Affordable Housing?
When we did this with our projects, the staff would go back and ask qualifying questions of her data. And that did take a couple of weeks.
Because I think that the lack of, so in the, the one example I'm remembering, the lack of having any contractor bid that said this is what it'll cost to do it, that was one of the reasons why we asked for it to be considered as a loan instead of a grant. Because we were missing that evidence, really, that gave us confidence.
As long as staff thinks staff has time. And of course, it's going to depend on how many come in, I think.
Yeah.
So like for the Lutheran charities project, we asked for our, could you show us your matching funds? Some evidence of that? And then they did, and then that cleared the hurdle.
If I don't remember correctly from their meeting, they had a discussion about, this is why we want to give this money to organizations rather than individuals.
That was another concern, that we hadn't done it before, so we didn't have precedent on, how do you hold a private or profit group accountable for these requirements? But this one has a built-in requirement, which our other one didn't.
Actually, you have a requirement.
I will say, there's something disempowering from the Affordable Housing Commission's perspective. Because it felt like we did a lot of work and then we brought it to city council. And then city council redid all the entire work. So I don't know where the balance is between empowering commissioners to do their work and to trust that word and, and consider recommendations, like, and pick up that work where they left off instead of redoing the entire work.
Well, what I, what I've heard so far from Will is that we're going to be getting the aggregate comments that have been received thus far. And so my intent is primarily to be handed to the criteria.
And you noticed that the moment we realized that was on the table, we pivoted immediately to beginning with the existing criteria.
Well, not only that, but if, if that were true, we wouldn't have you guys here at this joint meeting. We would just make the decision ourselves. So, I mean, the whole reason that we, that we created this joint meeting was so that we could work together, come up with, not to exclude you.
I think this happens every due council. Councils come in and they, they, we're the ones who establish the direction for the commissions that's were going on, and it just takes time for them to melt. I feel like now this commission and council are probably more aligned and they get a little bit easier to empower and stuff. Same thing happened with the city commission and Adfa, short-term rentals. Work is going on in both areas, it'll come together.
I mean, to your point, Leslie, clearly there was a strong feeling here and there was more value in sticking with the existing criteria as a beginning point. And so that's what we're doing.
Thank you for doing that. My standup was good.
Can I ask Affordable Housing Commission for, this work realistic and, and, but I didn't ask city council specifically, so Affordable Housing Commission, anything else on, does the processing reasonable? Okay, city?
It doesn't matter how long it takes to propose it together, or if it's a developer, it's 50 days. If it opens in town, definitely, if it is, that's great.
I mean, we can look into that and see, if we use what we use in the past for our typical Affordable Housing Trust Fund, would that seem like a reasonable approach? Maybe that city council.
Peggy's point is exactly right.
Yeah.
If we go with that timeline, you're going to be eliminating any developer from a large project because there's simply not enough time. They would require six months or better to envision a product.
But I will say like the projects I'm familiar with that are like the large legacy type projects that I think you're interested in, their window for submission to the state for housing vouchers is going to be by March. So this isn't going to work for actual true legacy projects that are happening, just because we're having such a long timeline in general. I mean, there's two I'm thinking of right now that could, would be great projects that would qualify for this as developers, but that wouldn't work for them. They would need to know as a part of their application was made by March.
But March 2025 will work. That's exactly.
No, no, this year, their application is new this year. They were filled in 2025.
What I'm saying is it's going to take them a longer period of time. So if we want to have those projects, we're not going to fund this next year.
Yeah, I'm just saying that those projects already exist. Affordable Housing is not a new idea, it's not a new goal, it's been a goal for five years, and so there's a lot of businesses partnering with developers for, let's just use Representative Sharp, you know, $2 million example, that application, they're going to want approval of the C E T funds by March. They're not going to be able to wait till August is what I'm saying. So we might miss out on an opportunity for a true legacy project like you're talking about, you know, taking off my council, like the Providence project is another one. They need a letter saying intent to award X amount of dollars as part of their project for the Providence Drive project by March. So that's all I'm saying, is that this length of timeline is going to be, is going to be hard for some big projects that are currently underway anymore.
So clarify, oh, were you starting to raise your hand?
No, sir.
So to clarify, you're saying we need to shorten this time, right?
Mayor's saying for big projects, they're probably going to need longer time.
Well, I wasn't, that's the project that's already under consideration. I was thinking about new projects that would be.
I mean, I personally would like.
What are you saying?
I personally just would like to see it shorter, because I just want to be able to start awarding stuff, get it out, help people, and not.
And there's no reason that we couldn't say, of the projects submitted, we don't, it's not, it doesn't need the qualifications of a legacy project, we're going to roll this money over, right? There's no reason we couldn't say that. I'm just saying that I think it should be in alignment with the applications that are due to take more large destruction projects.
Is it feasible when the Affordable Housing Commission works with staff in a meeting to draft it, is it feasible to, like, do the word submitting during the meeting so that by the end of that meeting, we can actually approve it and eliminate that second draft?
On the, so review and revise the live document in February, or in January, and not have to have a February meeting?
Is it possible that we refine it during the meeting so that by the end of it, staff can see it and we've approved it, or do you really need that time to?
We will probably require to be there multiple hours to do a live edit as a group. So I've done that before, and that was during comprehensive planning process, and typically the hearing took anywhere from five to 13 hours.
For a rubric, I don't mean to be rude, but I am looking at this as thinking I could do this in like 15 minutes. I don't think this is like, I feel, I thought that's what we were using the time for, frankly. Like, I feel like this could be, we could take this out of things.
It was what we were doing.
But then the decision came, the decision came out in the meeting that we've just convened criteria, we went to.
We don't need to be more than four months to get a compact.
But if you want to be fast, we could ask the Affordable Housing Commission to proceed with their existing criteria. There's a lot of matching between what we sent in to Will and what they're already using, and you could cut a couple out there if council is willing to use the Affordable Housing criteria.
I thought council would already agreed to.
Yeah, but melding with the ideas that were talked about, the seven, so probably not number seven.
Well, some of the stuff Will came up, and I guess you could meld it together, yes.
I think it could. So the only, if we, if it's important to intersect some of the large projects, because we know they're going to go forward, we know they're well managed, you know, this would be an awesome opportunity to use this money effectively on a legacy project, then one way to make it happen faster is to say, use your existing criteria, let's get it published out there, let's get these things in, and let's make a decision. I'm okay with that.
Okay, so that's a fork in the discussion. That's a fork. So we have to decide, no, we have to decide, is, are we then saying that for an expeditious process, we desire not to do the resolution?
That's what I meant.
And then the beginning of a new creation process, we want to just use the existing criteria? That's a decision that we, that has just come up.
Right, that's, if you want to go faster, that would let you go faster, is all I'm saying.
Well, before Larry left, he seemed agreeable to looking at current and the newly suggested ones, and seeing if they could be merged or melded, take one out, put one in. So I don't, I think these are worth considering, in addition to what's there, not come up with 14, but it could suit up some wording, maybe nobody's on the, like, oh, we don't get that, I don't know.
I always think that criteria could be improved and made better, but is there anything in the existing one that's incompatible with, that would have to be changed in the?
I thought I heard someone say number seven should or should not be there.
Well, the generational wealth home ownership, that one fits under, it's a specific program that fits under, what's there, 35%. It's very specific to homeownership and down payment assistance, so.
So which one are you concerned?
The scoring suggestion, category seven.
So, sorry, the seven that melded.
Yeah.
Is it similar to one of these?
Both related.
Totally. Is it similar? Well, no, because like I think it would be like, there'd be.
Down payment assistance, for example.
Yes, D P A is already.
They wouldn't have used it for before, so it is.
But I don't think anything's, I agree.
Oh, if the.
It's only going to be melded into.
If the goal is just to get this money out there as quick as possible, then we should use, what's there?
Because of the legacy projects, which we will otherwise miss this opportunity to.
Clearly, if we just use the existing criteria and don't consider any new ones, we would be able to move in a more expeditious manner.
That was all I was saying. I wasn't trying to advocate for it if it's a problem, I'm just saying if speed is needed, that's one way to get.
That is the decision I've been trying to get to the whole time. Do we just want to put this money out, or do we want to try to do something big and good with it? Well, the other projects are good too, I don't need to be disparaging.
Christie?
Oh, I would just, you know, because this is a work session, I don't know that we should make that decision.
Correct, thank you kindly. Nice decision.
But it is okay to not do that.
Well, is there a reason that the NOPA can't just be opened, come January, and just move all of it up so that long January at?
If January.
Why can't it be?
Trying to think of how quickly we can get authorization from city council to bring the NOPA that was previously heard by Affordable Housing Commission.
We could do that on January 2nd.
On the second meeting in January?
No, January 2nd. January 2nd, first meeting, essence based upon the existing criteria.
Right. Because that would become a step one, step two, and that's what the Affordable Housing Commission.
I don't know if other, I don't know if it's written down, and I don't know how other members of the commission have interpreted it, but I've never felt that the scoring section was binding, in the sense that, well, if they got 70 and this group got 60, we have to go with one, and that the 60 gets nothing. So unless there's something that is on the new recommendation that, I haven't seen that list, but if there's something on there that we want to influence, just because it's not on the criteria, I would assume they could still influence us, but this helps the project developers know what we're really looking for. But I never felt this was binding.
Maybe that's an attorney question.
Yes.
Is it? If we have a rubric for scoring, is it binding?
I think it depends on, well, for example, for your Affordable Housing distribution, there's a set of procedures and rules for how it's distributed and hires for things and the process, and so that is really what guides you as opposed to something like a public contracting code that you have to follow in awarding contracts for good services, for example. So, I mean, there is some progression in awarding grants in ways that you don't have or other types of awards than things, but if you are going to follow, you follow your own procedures that you have set in place for.
And so if we were to deviate in an award from our scoring criteria, would it be expected that the awarding group would have to justify that decision or explain their rationale, kind of like a claim, I'm thinking from, claim to explain.
You, I think you want to be very clear in your expectations, the NOPA document itself, how it might work, if that makes sense.
I don't want to be in a position of defending somebody with a 60 score, you know, money versus the 70.
Right, that's what I'm worried about, because that would seem like an exposure the city would.
Well, and, I mean, that is, I didn't want to talk bad about what they've done, but that is, the problem is, there's no place here that says you must have 55 points to be awarded money. So let's assume that you get more applicants, and altogether they total up to the, to the correct amount, so they can all be funded, and the lowest one is 15 points. Do you have to give the money to the 15 point, or do you, can you, do you have the ability to even say, no, we're not going to fund that one this year, we'll do it again next year?
And I think that's a reasonably good question, because as the first in a uniquely timed distribution, if we didn't get some, or whether the city council or the Affordable Housing Commission thought that things weren't right to be funded because nothing was high enough quality that they were comfortable with, we could put that in the notice of funding availability to say, the city reserves the right to not fund any projects that do not seem to meet the expectations of the city for its residents or.
The Affordable Housing Commission is going to see that a lot, I mean, as soon as they get down to it, I, that's going to become obvious that, what do we do?
Back to the, back to the question just kind of floating around, do people feel generally that sticking with the existing criteria should be more expeditious as a good idea, or do people, possibly influenced by the list of things, or do people feel more that they would like to synthesize this new list with the knowledge that it would be sufficient potentially? Just to get a sense of how people feel. So asking for a vote.
I think these already have criteria, makes sense to you.
Okay. Does that kind of resonate with people, Peggy?
I thought these were good suggestions, and so I think looking at this in light of each other, maybe this one's a bit better than that. I don't think it has to be a month or two long process, though. It could be even, I don't know, a subject of your, you know, Affordable Housing Commission could have a little working meeting and score with staff or something, and then get it out in a couple of weeks.
Secondly, if we have to go to the Affordable Housing Commission and the city council, each of those have timelines for us to get there that have to do with public noticing, having staff have time to do those before the noticing occurs, and it all just makes it wider, so each meeting is not a thing. It's the work leading up to it, an empty space where public noticing has happened, and then doing that, and then action items occur after it. So I hear you, I would like to do it. I don't feel like I can commit to it being a whole lot faster than this. I would be happy to run a much tighter project management and see if I can tighten this up and make it faster, and I would be happy to reach out to, for example, the Affordable Housing Commission chair, if something could or needs to deviate from the typical schedule and people willing to schedule special meetings to facilitate that. But right now, I don't know that I would expect it to get a lot shorter, if we have to follow, if we choose to follow the process. If we do like the thing suggested, use the existing criteria to just get initiated, bring what was previously accepted by the Affordable Housing Commission back to city council, even with some minor provisions or whatever, then that should be pretty quick.
Okay, so I get it, I'm not on working government, like, what is the, can't, knowing that, can't just like one person from city council, one person from housing commission, come together, sit down, write it, come to January 2nd, city council meeting, propose together, no one on it, NOPA.
No one from the Affordable Housing Commission, got it again right now. So what we have for existing, but for new stuff, it would.
I think they can consolidate it.
But for something new, it would be picking someone from that, so it would be a significant deviation, does it have to occur that way? I don't know. But it does seem unusual to have an established committee that was there to help advise the city council on their affordable housing issues, and then just pick some up.
I didn't say that. I'm saying we designate one person from the Affordable Housing Commission, one person from city council to consolidate the rubrics together and co-present on behalf of each other at city council meeting.
One.
I'm just trying to avoid how most meetings.
Right, so it could be another joint meeting at a typical city council meeting, where it's broadened and becomes a joint meeting and bringing the entire Affordable Housing Commission.
Yeah, we could just bring them like our old work sessions, eh, and bring them.
I mean, it would be this again, it'd be this again, but hopefully in the big, I would think.
I know.
And it wouldn't be a work session.
Well, it could be work ahead of room, and then you go on. Derek?
Yeah, I think to be expedient with the whole process, the last time we discussed C E Ts with city council, it was made, it was made very clear that there is a process in place, and that we should follow that process. There is this process, and I think we should just move forward. That was what I heard, clearly the difference.
What is the process, though, that you're saying?
Your process.
I agree.
Sticking with the existing criteria.
That's what was said, not by council.
They said you haven't seen it yet. So given that we couldn't make a decision because your process hadn't executed, the fastest way to move forward is to allow you to execute to your process. I know you won't be there, you won't be there, whoever the new people are.
Well, I'm okay with that.
I feel for the projects that are there, but to wait a year and then expect everybody to work, 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 I don't feel like that feels right. I think process is there for a reason. I feel really kind of bad saying that, but that is how I feel.
I missed it, you feel what?
I feel like that the process should also be followed, as, I mean, it's pretty tight even how it's lined up there, but even though we might miss these two projects, they sound really good, but I just think the process should be followed.
But this is the process.
We just don't have that right now.
This is a process to require a new, new this. The only reason that's taking that time is that we said.
We're editing the.
We're editing that original one.
That's what people want, it's failing me, wanting.
So we're exploring here, if we.
That's what we came here today for, right?
Right, and if we said at the end, gosh, we didn't understand your rubric, it's good, then all of those meetings to get to a new rubric aren't needed.
I think we just stick with this. It's my thing, I mean, I, the two projects that came to the council earlier, and we saw this, I wasn't looking at it and going, you know, you could make it better, I think we need to, this one or that one, I mean.
So there's the old, there's the old thing, we always say 80/20, right, in a meeting, when you kind of feel like it's timed out a little bit? So it does sound to me, without making any decision or calling for a vote, which we can't, clearly can't do in a work session, it does seem to me that we're landing more on the side of staying with the existing criteria for dispatch purposes, because of existing projects that are out in the universe. So I guess I'm kind of feeling that.
Yep.
So maybe that's where we're at, with this wonderful discussion.
So what's the timeline for that?
Not that, yeah, not that.
If it just doesn't exist, I mean, it's much shorter.
If you all feel that that's a good idea, just take a nibble on a cookie.
If you all feel that that's a good idea, just take a nibble on a cookie.
It is my job not to be in trouble. I do think the city council, we may not have fully understood the process and the good.
I just asked what the timeline would look like now if we just.
So basically several of these steps go away. They go to city council. If they get direction to staff or staff figures out, we can bring it immediately to council because it's already gone to the Affordable Housing Commission. So I work directly with reporter and Will to see what needs to go, when it needs to go. That would be one or two to the city council. It could be back to back if it is two. And then we basically would just revise the draft ECTNO that we currently have so that we've got correct dates for opening the window, closing the window, accepting dates and work that in. And if for some reason that opening and closing the window is too far away from existing and scheduled Affordable Housing Commission meeting, then we work with the chair to schedule a special meeting.
Essentially what you have where you staff opens NOFA in April could move up to January or probably.
Probably January.
January.
That sounds good to me.
Did you want a cookie?
Like a little nibble there's there's.
We've got to give us your.
I'll agree with you guys.
No laundry sharks, no straws, no.
Exactly.
I'm prepared.
I don't want you to be an ALC bulletin.
Get us out of here.
Okay.
A journey.
All right.
Who a journey.
All right. Let's meet in a journey.
All right. Thank you, everyone.